If folks could take their seats, we'll get started in a moment, please. All right. Welcome to this December 9th regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabana?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of November 18th?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Merklinger? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Gales?
Yes.
Vice President Mortickei?
Yes.
President Elper?
Yes. One program note for this evening. We're tabling the second reading of the policy. And, other than that, student liaison report, you're up.
Hello. Nothing really has been going on within the high school for the student liaisons. We've been collecting data for students, but we haven't really been acting upon things. We've been talking with teachers about green programs in order to facilitate interest and see who wants to participate and who wants to create committees and boards in order to go out and make change, but as of now, nothing major is going on.
Okay. Dr. Cascoe?
Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to see all the faces out in the audience of staff, teachers, and administrators, and families, so welcome. Before we kind of get into the items on the agenda for the report, I just wanted to speak a little bit about, you know, our snow event from last week, you know, which we got through okay. And I just wanted to say a special thanks to, really, the entire community, starting with internally, you know, our staff from just kind of getting here and getting into the classrooms and getting things done, getting our kids safely on the road, to our buildings and ground staff and our custodial staff for all their hard work in clearing the grounds and getting the schools ready to open, our courageous bus drivers for, you know, getting on the road and getting all our kids home safe and getting themselves home safe, and also to our partners in the township. You know, just worked for the first time with Joe Pelosi and the DPW and law enforcement, and they were great collaborators and partners on that. And so it really was a team effort. Just wanted to publicly thank them for their assistance and all the work that they put in to make it successful and safe. We have a great evening planned for you tonight. This is, you know, this time of year, you know, a time of year when we were thankful for many things. This is an appropriate time of year to be recognizing staff members and administrators and schools that have achieved and have accomplished great things. So really happy tonight to be recognizing a number of folks. We could be here until dawn, you know, recognizing everyone, but this is just a sampling of various achievements that we thought, and the board thought, merited attention. So I'm going to go to the stage. I'm going to call up, in some cases, I will speak on behalf of the award recipient, and in some cases, I may call someone up to do that, you know, for me, who knows that staff member maybe more closely. We'll invite them up to the stage to accept their award. Mr. President and Mrs. Vice President will join me up there. We'll do a little picture and give folks some nice recognition. Without further ado. I'd like to first call up Mr. Robert Klimt, the Principal of Liberty School, who will present the first award, the New Jersey Department of Education 2019 exemplary educator award to one of Liberty Middle Schools' ELA teachers, Mr. Mike Bridge. So, Mr. Bridge, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cascoe. So each year, or any year, I could take an opportunity to showcase a staff member, and in this case, a staff member that was performing at the highly effective rating, and that's how the award is kind of based. I will pursue that. Mr. Bridge is a hard-working, very organized teacher who connects with his students and, without giving away his confidential SGP data, again, he's been amazing. So, again, a humble guy. You know, I might have him say a couple words, not really. Now, I'd be happy to have Mike up here. Mike's been with us since we opened Liberty. Again, I'm proud to be onstage with Mike. Come on up, Mike.
So the next award goes to Kelly Elementary School for achieving the Bronze Level of Future-Ready Schools. Fantastic, yes. Now, this is a lot of work, okay? You know, just before we start talking about what it really means to kids and to the learning environment, let's just talk a little bit. I understand the amount of work that goes into just the application itself. It's a tremendous undertaking. It requires a lot of time, volunteer time on the part of teachers, to go through the rubric, to cull the artifacts, to archive those artifacts so that they can be sent, you know, to the review committee. I know the tremendous amount of work. It shows great commitment. And, you know, that's just the work to get the application done. That says nothing to, really, the quality of the things that are going on that enable you to get that designation. I think we have our Director of Technology here as well, Mr. Santiago. So certainly, Mr. Santiago and his department, Technology Department, big part of that as well, ensuring that our schools have the necessary technology and, like, the really boring stuff, like the system works well enough that it can be used on a regular basis, but it's really important. So certainly, Mr. Santiago and his department are a big part of that. Yes. And, you know, and also to our Curriculum Department, Mr. Mendez and the curriculum folks, who, you know, a big part of that is the curriculum that accompanies those courses. So it really is a team effort, a district effort, and the board, right? The board in supporting, you know, the allocation of funds and resources that can give the staff what they need in the building. So truly a team effort, but obviously, the folks at Kelly Elementary School. Oh, wait, yes, there we go, Technology Integration Specialist, I see you, I see you there, Row Three. Thank you so much, Diana DeCosta. Okay, that's a big piece, too. That's a big piece, so we're all part of it. So, without further ado, I'd like to invite Dr. Polara and her staff, who can join me down here. I'll present you with the plaque, and we'll do a little photo op. Come on down. Congratulations again. Mr. Santiago, I know how much you like to take photos, so you come on down. We want our Technology Integration Specialist, please join us here as well. Come on down. All right, so technology, folks, you can excuse yourselves. The rest of you stay up here, because you're not done yet. Okay, so the Kelly School, we're going to keep them up here. We do have another award for them, another, yes, Kelly School. All right, getting it done. So Kelly School achieved the Gold Level Recognition. Gold, gold's good. That's the highest you can get, right? There's no platinum? Is that right? Okay, so you're at the top. Excellent. Easy ride, safe routes to school. Now, I know a little bit about it, okay? I know that it is, again, it is a tremendous amount of work, it's a tremendous commitment, it requires really collaborating with different groups, outside agencies, community agencies, but the purpose of it all is really focusing on safety for kids, right? And, you know, and more specifically, this idea of, like, enabling our kids to walk to school, like we used to do in the old days, right? And so it's, you know, it's safety, it's health, but it's a great community initiative. But I'd actually would like, maybe, Dr. Polara, would you like to come up and speak and just tell us a little bit about, you know, getting to that level of gold and kind of what it's meant to you in the journey and what it's involved?
I always have too many words, so I won't say too many. Well, what it entailed was, we had to take a look at how our children get to school. We had to look at how many students take buses, how many students walk to school, how many students are dropped off at school, how many students would walk if given a safe way to get there. Could we have walking school buses? So every year, for the last five years, we've had a national, we've celebrated National Walk to School Day, and along with some of my colleagues, I believe by leading, by example, it helps all of our kids. So a group of teachers who live around where I live, and I live in Caldwell, we walk to school from Caldwell on Walk to School Day, and we meet the walking school bus in West Orange. And so students get the idea that they can wander and talk and have a social time on their way to school each day. We also took a look at our arrival and dismissal and how we could make that safer. We've had bicycle rodeos, we've had assemblies where we talked about safe crossing of the streets, how traffic safety, how we can minimize accidents that way. And so, year by year, we've increased our data and increased the safety of our arrival and dismissal, and the number of students that are actually walking to school safely and enjoying that each year. So it's been kind of a fun journey. I hope we can continue that. And thank you.
And just a final thought before I present Kelly School with their certificate, is we're committed to really expanding this on the district. We know that the township of West Orange is very committed to this, and so we look forward to learning from the schools that have blazed the path already. So, present to you. Now, following, yes, following along, you know, down the path which arguably Kelly School blazed, we have our next school that achieved that status, and we'd like to have Mr. Klimt and any staff members from Liberty School come on up and accept their award for Bronze Level Recognition. Easy ride, safe routes to school. And last, but certainly not least, okay, our most sage leader in the district, and I think it might be our oldest elementary school in the district, 125 years old? That's amazing. Washington Elementary School, led by Ms. Marie DeMayo. Yes, Bronze Level Status. Come on up, Ms. DeMayo, with any staff members you have present, achieved Bronze Level Recognition for Easy Ride, Safe Routes to School. Come on down, Washington, folks. Okay, the next award, I feel qualified to present. In the short time that I've been in West Orange, I've spent a lot of time working and collaborating and conferring with this administrator, which I should, you know, because it's the, you know, one of the most important positions, administrative positions, in the school district. The building, the school that this individual leads, is basically like a school district in of itself. It has more students than many school districts in the state have in their entire district. And that's Mr. Hayden Moore. Mr. Hayden Moore. So Mr. Moore was recognized as the New Jersey Association of Student Council's Administrator of the Year, which, yes, which is a tremendous honor. And listen, you know, when you think about that the students are the folks that we're serving directly, I mean, you can get no better praise than being recognized by the student government. And, you know, running a building, running this school, or any school for that matter, but a school of this size, is tremendously complex. Keeping all those balls in the air, from both a leadership standpoint and managerial standpoint, you know, and at the same time, creating an environment and a culture where students want to come, right? And that's what I see when I walk the hallways to the high school. I see students who are generally pretty happy to be here, seem to enjoy being here, okay? And that starts at the top, right? Now, I've talked about how Mr. Moore's background as a social worker, I think, gives him great insight into understanding people and understanding relationships, but don't be deceived, because when, you know, Mr. Moore's tough, too, when he needs to be. And he advocates fiercely for the things he believes in when he thinks it's in the best interest of his students and his staff. It's a great balance, and it's what it takes to be an effective leader. You need to know when to use the carrot and when to use the stick, and he does it masterfully. So, Mr. Moore, congratulations. We have an outstanding team of leaders in this district, something that I recognized pretty early on in my time here and working with our leadership team over the summer, and that's only been further reinforced in working with them. And the next recipient, who unfortunately has the flu, he texted me to let me know that he was not, he was under the weather, and that's Mr. Figurito. You know, from what I understand, and, you know, I'm only recently arrived, Mr. Figurito was an outstanding teacher, you know, an exemplary teacher, and he's on his way to being an outstanding administrator as well. He's passionate about history, he's a great guy, great human being, and he's doing some excellent work. So I'd actually just like to invite Ms. Mendez up to just accept the award representing the curriculum team, Mr. Figurito's behalf. So round of applause for Mr. Figurito. Now, the last award, last recognition, none of this would make any difference if the kids didn't get here, right? So, you know, and some of them walk, and some of them have their parents bring them, but Ms. McFarland, we transport, what, about 5,000 students on a daily basis? 6,000 students, right? And so, you know, it would matter if we didn't have the dedicated folks who drive the, you know, the buses, work on the buses, right? Go ahead. Now, I'm going to invite Ms. McFarland up in a moment to speak on our next recipient's behalf, but I'd like to just say a couple words myself, because it's a big district. We have, you know, over 1,000 employees, and I haven't had an opportunity of meeting each one of them personally, but I have met this next employee. I met him this summer when I was doing some rounds, I met him down at the bus garage, and this individual was, quite frankly, he was washing one of our buses, making sure that our buses look good and send, you know, the right message to our community. And I even put it on social media at the time, giving him recognition for that. I'm sure there are many other things he does for the department, but I'd like to recognize, along with Mrs. McFarland, Musa Kaba from the Transportation Department. Come on up, Musa. Elena?
Good evening. To our board members, our superintendent, coworkers, residents, families, and friends, I am honored to present to you, Musa Kaba. Musa holds the title of full-time driver for the Transportation Department, though he is so much more to the entire district of West Orange. In the Transportation Department, Musa is here every morning. He handles any mechanical issue we may have while getting the buses on the road. It may be a jump start, shuffling the buses around the garage so the drivers can get out, maybe a marker light is out and needs to be replaced, or a driver's having trouble at the fuel pumps. Musa does it all and is still able to cover a route when needed. If any driver is having trouble on the road, Musa responds to the scene with a replacement bus. He's very conscious of costs. You should all hear that one. He will make any small vehicle repair when he can, as opposed to sending it out to the repair shop. Checks the fluids, replaces the headlights, the crossing arms, stop signs, you name it, Musa does it. He also serves as our building maintenance and custodian. There's a clogged toilet. If some overflowing trash or a child got sick on the bus, Musa cleans it up. Weekends or nights, Musa's our on-call emergency person. If a garage door's not working, a bus breaks down, a last-minute trip, he responds. After the morning, he becomes the West Orange District Mailman. He travels from building to building, delivering and picking up the mail, going to county offices, dropping stuff off. He returns instruments and Chromebooks that are left on the bus. He has stopped at the public library and returned books for people. So no matter what you ask, Musa can do it, and he will always respond, be there in two minutes. Everybody knows Musa, and from what I understand, even the students know Musa. We all truly appreciate his hard work. He does not know the meaning of the word "no," and it is always serviced with a smile. So for these reasons and many more, I would like you to know how honored I am to have Musa Kaba as part of the West Orange Transportation Department and all of West Orange.
And I know we have some other drivers here...
And monitors.
And monitors that are here. So, anyone that's from the Transportation Department, would you just come on up and, come up onstage and come up with Musa and join us in a picture? Come on up. We appreciate you. Don't be shy.
Come on, Amparo. Get up here. Come on, you two, go, hurry up. We're waiting for you.
And that concludes the recognition portion of the agenda. Thank you again. And a round of applause again for all of our recipients. Great job, everyone.
All right, getting back to the regular program. Back to you, Dr. Cascone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alper. So, the next item under Superintendent's report, Mr. Mendez, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, has come this evening to just provide a brief update on the status of our Readers and Writers Workshop initiative, more specifically as it relates to a motion that's on the agenda under curriculum relating to the movement of some funds into Title, into Title II in order to pay for the PD. So, Mr. Mendez?
Good evening. On the agenda, the Board will find a recommendation for ELA Professional Development in Literacy for grades K-5. This item was previously approved by the Board on September 23rd, 2019, and it's appearing here today to redirect $22,100 of the originally approved $36,400 from the LEA budget to the Title II grant as a funding source. This is possible because Title II is for professional development. The sources, the funding availed itself, and so then we were able to redirect it into the Title II grant and free up district money. In the Board packet, you received a description of how the professional development would be used. Just for the public, briefly, last June, at the end of the year, we did a survey for the staff, and the staff asked us to consider providing professional development in smaller groups, really being able to go into classrooms and observe as like a model classroom site, and to get resources. And so then, a part of the professional development is really to unpack those resources. The teachers go into the classrooms, they get to see the lessons in play. They have support to really debrief and talk about best practices, what the structures of the Readers and Writers Workshop model look like, and how can they take real, meaningful applications and apply them in their classrooms.
Just a, just a few kind of, thank you, Mr. Mendez. Just, you know, I've been actively involved in, you know, in just kind of understanding and meeting with Mr. Mendez, meeting with Mrs. Haneradi, the K-5 ELA supervisor, to kind of understand the past, understand the present, you know, kind of get an idea of where we're heading in the future. And listen, we know that the implementation of Readers and Writers Workshop is something that's been, you know, ongoing for some time. What we're trying to do this year is really kind of finally gain some traction with this initiative. And, you know, from what I understand and what I've seen, the concerted PD that we've, and the funds to some extent that we're investing in this this year, you know, is to some extent unprecedented. Now, a fair question is, is, you know, how much longer will we continue to spend this kind of money on PD? And the answer is, is certainly not forever. And the game plan is that we kind of gradually wean off the external PD. And I think that really begins, you know, starts this year and really begins in earnest next year, as we have the capacity to now establish kind of model classrooms in each school. We can begin to do that. But what you're seeing here in terms of expenditure, this investment of financial resources is an effort to really kind of give this thing, you know, a real goal and to get it on track after, you know, a number of years of it kind of languishing. So, but one final piece is, there's been some, a lot of survey gathering, there's another one in the works now, so that we can really listen to our teachers. I mean, I think that that's a really important piece to this, is really understanding where our teachers are coming from, how's the PD been working, what are you finding challenging, and really being responsive to that. And Mr. Mendez and Mrs. Haneradi are, have been doing that and are going to continue to do that, to assess the efficacy of the PD which we've been delivering and which the Board has previously approved for payment. So, just a few words from my perspective. Questions? Yes, sir?
Just a little, first of all, I'm glad we'll be able to save money and utilize Title II funds. My only concern is that, you alluded to this earlier, to this earlier, that we've been kind of trying to do this for a long time. The Readers and Writers Workshop was introduced to the district about nine or 10 years ago. And I remember when, I won't mention the name, but a former ELA supervisor was in place starting in 2013, was then reintroduced, there were parent, there were, there were some PD done then, there were parent workshops so parents could help understand, well, what's the book club for, what is closed reading and all that. And then we went through another cycle, and I thought that then the next supervisor, 612 as well as K-5, that they were supposed to be picking up the, you know, the torch and kind of moving ahead with that. And I know that we have some teachers, my kids were able to experience teachers who delivered it very, very well. And then there were a couple of cases I brought up earlier this year before you came on board, where the pacing was dramatically off. Some classes were, you know, you know, for honors, may have been reading a book every two weeks, and for the general classes, may have been reading a book a month in the reading clubs, as well as the ones that were shared by the classroom. There was inconsistency. But my, my, my big question is, knowing that there's some teachers who have executed this well, knowing that we've now had supervisors wrestling with this for a while, and the fact that it's been in the district for a decade, well, I'm all for PD. I'm all for heavy focus on PD. Don't we have some of the internal knowledge and resources at this point to have utilized that ourselves? I mean, I could, now, I don't want to name names, but I know teachers who, well, like a Mr. Bridge, I can name that one, who executed it flawlessly. And I know at Mount Pleasant, it was executed very, very well. So, I'm just wondering why we weren't able to utilize some of the internal knowledge and internal resources to, to be conducting this and already setting up some model classrooms?
Yeah, so, that, that had happened last year, but I think the, the challenges is that we had, you know, kind of specific sites, and it really became a question of capacity of, you know, overwhelming certain buildings and certain classrooms. I think one of the things that a layer, a layer of complexity, which is also a good thing, has been the introduction of these, of these units of study, because they, they respond to a call for resources from teachers. Now, we're managing, you know, the, you know, the, the balance of how we're utilizing these, right? Like fighting, striking that balance of, you know, not using them, you know, in a box, like this is the curriculum. But by the same token, it's kind of a natural inclination for teachers who are making that methodological shift and are learning the methodology. It's a natural inclination for them to kind of cling to the units of study, because it gives them a known that they can kind of work off of. But I think the Readers and Writers, this is not an uncommon story of Readers and Writers Workshop languishing for years and years. And the reason is, is because it's extremely complex. And then when you add on, I mean, as a methodology, right, it really is, I refer to it as like improvisational jazz. It's not, it's not reading notes off a sheet of music. It's really just being improvisational, and that takes a real level of mastery from a teacher. And, you know, when you talk about turnover, not only turnover in, you know, in classrooms, but more importantly, turnover administrative ranks, including the central office, okay, that doesn't make it any easier, right? So, you know, we have consistency now. I think we've gotten a really honest appraisal of where the weaknesses are. But I can tell you, Mr. Robertson, that I'm very committed to in every building having at least two classrooms and working, we're in the process of working on now, and identifying teachers who are ready, willing, and able to be those laboratories of study so that we don't have to send teachers to other schools, but they can go right within their own building to observe classrooms where teachers are modeling best practices and mastery of that methodology. So, I understand the frustration there. I think we're, you know, we're on the path to being where we want to be, and it's going to take another couple of years. But I think we're finally on the right path, and I believe that.
Okay. And I understand the complexities of the balanced literacy approach. I get that. Has clear direction been given also in terms of pacing? And I'll go back to the example of, in some cases, and this happened both Liberty and Roosevelt, you had one teacher for honors who was reading, who was reading The Outsiders, and it took him two weeks to complete it, and another teacher it took a month. Has clear instructions been given and looked for to the principals for pacing, and that's what we're finding?
You know, I think, I think what the challenging thing about pacing is, is, you know, is, is, you know, the premise of pacing is, it's a very linear concept. I think it's, it's connected very much to kind of the idea of kind of content delivery and content acquisition. When you talk about, you know, early literacy and balanced literacy, which is really a more kind of skill and competency-based approach, you know, I think that's where it makes pacing kind of a more nuanced conversation and more nuanced to actually implement. But I would argue that, you know, really, that's something we need to focus on. It's, it's something where we need to kind of, we need to be, and I think that's really where giving teachers an opportunity to talk with one another and collaboratively plan and learn from one another is a huge piece to that. Because they're not talking to one another, you know, they never, you know, they don't have an opportunity to learn, oh, you're there, like, how, how are you there? Like, I'm only here. How did you get there? And those conversations are really rich opportunities for teachers to sync up and, and understand. But I do think that pacing is something with, specifically within, when you're using a workshop model, is more of a challenge. They send, for example, say, for example, when you're using a basal, you know, where it actually lays out sequentially, it has a pacing guide and a scope and sequence, Readers and Writers Workshop doesn't necessarily have that kind of prescriptive pacing. Am I wrong in saying that?
Well, I thought for book clubs, it would still, especially at the honors level, where it's supposed to be a little bit more accelerated...
Oh, we're talking about middle school?
Yeah, well, middle school is where I start to notice the greatest disparities. Yeah.
Okay, you want to hit that one?
Yep.
I agree that giving the teachers the flexibility to weave in and out of the workshop model and the content is very important. At the same time, we have developed a scope and sequence that does provide very clear, at least, parameters within which the teacher should attempt to work, and that is for coverage of the content. However, what we're doing this year is, as we look at the curriculum again, as we're pushing in the units of study, our curriculum is dynamic, it's live, it's not supposed to be static on the shelf. We are, through these cycles, going to be asking the teachers to continue to enter into the feedback cycle to say, perhaps, we should reconsider where this unit is placed, or how this PBA is addressing the student learning, or where this book that we purchased in our units of study may better suit this unit. So, there will be some replacement, there will be some revision, and we will do that with the teachers and from the teachers throughout the year. So, right now, our professional development cycles are scheduled through March, I believe, and then April through June, we're going to sit then and gather feedback from the teachers and from the cycles to inform any future revisions for the curriculum. Those revisions will then be made between April and June, presented to the Board so that we can send teachers home in the summer with a revised scope and sequence as they see fit. Again, when we're adopting new resources, then we want to make sure our curriculum really lines up well. With that said, the units of study are resources. We have curriculum, and so it's the curriculum that we want to follow. The units of study are meant to support that. And so then, we're messaging, and we're going to be very careful that we're not expecting the teachers to follow scripted units of study and every single unit that's provided. Again, they should be resources, but we'll work toward that end. We do see some teachers who want to use them just as a resource. We see some teachers who really cleave to them, because this is something I have now, it's in my hands, I love it, I want to use it. And so then, we'll work with both. I think there's differentiation there as well. We need to differentiate for the staff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, last week during the agenda meeting, I had some similar questions to Mr. Robertson, but some of my questions were not answered. And I also had a follow-up email that I sent. I wanted to find out, I mean, I was there from the beginning when we first approved Readers and Writers Workshop with Deborah Bartley-Carter, who's no longer here. And it's nine years later. And I truly do appreciate your hard work, and I, I'm all fine with PD. But my feeling is, after nine years, I know there's many, many teachers who are fluent in this, they're certified, they're ready to go, to turnkey this program, and I'm just amazed that we are again going outside for PD instead of encouraging teachers to be teacher leaders. I would like to see us empowering our teachers to take that next step seriously. And I'm just wondering, how much have we spent, and I sent that email, but I didn't get a response, from 2010 till now, on implementing this program for nine and a half years?
So, I can only speak to the time that I've been here. I think that, in the time that I've been here, I think we can look at the different phases of the balanced literacy model, we can look at the different approaches, we can look at the different teachers' needs. I understand that it is at a cost. The way that we're using the teachers now is very concrete. We're pushing into their classrooms. They are teaching their colleagues. We have a consultant to facilitate that learning. We have a consultant to help debrief the learning within the structures and the paradigms of the model. However, if we're pushing into a teacher's classroom, it's because we are putting their leadership on display. We are saying to their colleagues in front of that teacher and with that teacher, these are best practices, this is what we see that you do exceptionally well as you're delivering this model, and then let's come and talk about it. And if there are areas that we need to work together with to develop, then that's present, too. With that said, over time, we will gradually release. Right now, we do not have just one consultant providing professional development. We have the consultant, we have the supervisor, we have, when appropriate, the reading specialist aid and assist in that endeavor fluidly, and over, and the teachers, when we're pushing into their classrooms, when they volunteer their classrooms. It's not easy for a teacher to allow, you know, a group of 10 or 20 other teachers to come in and, and observe, but they do that with great, with great strength and pride, right? And so, they avail themselves for their teachers to give them, for their colleagues to give them feedback, for us to learn more about the model. I also want to say that as we progress with data, if the data says that this is a necessary area that we need to focus on, then our PD will focus in on what the data is saying. If we have new resources, then we're pushing in the PD with the new resources. So, while it may have been a prolonged time with professional development each year, we're refocusing that professional development to focus on the need at the time. As time goes on, we will move away from consultant. I think right now, our urgency is consistency across seven schools, right? And so then, in order to provide consistency across seven schools, we're attempting to do that as a unit en masse, with fidelity of implementation, and without having common planning at the elementary, without having faculty meetings that are devoted to supervisors, right? Like at the high school, we have those structures built in. At the middle school, we have those structures built in. At the elementary, not so. So, it's unless supervisors pulling all teachers from their building, which they would be missing class, which we do...
I was going to say, I thought you had common planning time and departmental meetings across grade levels.
At the elementary, we don't have it as we do at the high school or at the middle school.
Yeah, I thought we had that at elementary school.
They work together, but it's not, so it's a grade level... It's not easy for a teacher to allow, you know, a group of 10 or 20 other teachers to come in and, and observe, but they do that with great, with great strength and pride, right? And so they avail themselves for their teachers to give them, for their colleagues to give them feedback, for us to learn more about the model. I also want to say that as we progress with data, if the data says that this is a necessary area that we need to focus on, then our PD will focus in on what the data is saying. If we have new resources, then we're pushing in the PD with the new resources. So while it may have been a prolonged time with professional development each year, we're refocusing that professional development to focus on the need at the time. As time goes on, we will move away from consultant. I think, right now, our urgency is consistency across seven schools, right? And so then, in order to provide consistency across seven schools, we're attempting to do that as a unit en masse, with fidelity of implementation, and without having common planning at the elementary, without having faculty meetings that are devoted to supervisors, right? Like at the high school, we have those structures built in. At the middle school, we have those structures built in. At the elementary, not so. So it's unless supervisors pulling all teachers from their building, which they would be missing class, which we do.
I was going to say, I thought you had common planning time and departmental meetings across grade levels.
At the elementary, we don't have it as we do at the high school or at the middle school.
Yeah, I thought we had that at elementary school.
They work together, but it's not, so it's a grade-level meeting, but it's not as if, let's say at the high school, you have a department meeting where the supervisor meets with the whole staff. It's, it's more, it's not as easy to do that with seven buildings.
Yeah, going back a few years, I was on, I was one of the folks on the Professional Development Committee, and there were department meetings, so I don't know what happened to them. But I'm glad you mentioned the word observation, because we were so proficient in Reader's Writers Workshop that we had schools from out of state coming, coming to visit us, and, you know, you know, we were able to show them what, what to do in Reader's Writers Workshop. So I'm a little surprised that we're here. I mean, of course, this predates you because you're here three years. I was the previous Assistance Superintendent of Curriculum, but I'm just surprised that we're here again. That's where I am. I just can't wrap my head around.
Yeah.
Nine years again. We're here again redoing PD when we were the star district for Reader's Writers Workshop with people coming in from outside.
I think there's a, I think there's a couple of things. You know, I think one is, is, one of the, one of the gaps is how we're accounting for the onboarding and training of new staff that come into our district. Because, you know, to the best of my knowledge, you know, and I'm not overly familiar with elementary education teacher training programs, but I don't know the extent to which you're, you come out with mastery of the Reader's Writers Workshop approach, you know? So, the question is, is, you know, over the course of 10 years, how many new elementary educators have we actually hired into the district? And what has been our process for, you know, determining what their, what their knowledge base is, what their proficiency is with the Reader's Writers Workshop, and then ensuring that we have a deliberate approach to training them on that, right? So, there, you know, so we're training now our staff, but what, so when a teacher comes in next year, how do they get looped in? And where do they fall into the training cycle? So I think that's one, and that's not just West Orange. I think it's a, it's a profession-wide deficiency. I think the second piece is, is really our, particularly in a big district, and because of the K-5, the nature of K-5, where unlike middle school and high school, where you have that departmentalized structure, and it's just a smaller number of teachers, right? Even in a big district, okay, you have 25 social studies teachers. It's a much easier and manageable cohort to work with when you talk about how many, you know, third or fourth grade teachers that we have to train. And what I've seen, and what I absolutely intend to work, Ms. Mendez, moving forward, is, is we need to be much more forethoughtful about when we intend to implement something, okay? And really be planning multiple years to get to a point with teachers where we say, okay, four years from now, in September, this is when the expectation is that you're actually going to do it. And over that four years prepping, it's a gradual scaling up of expectation. But what we do, and it's the, it's the, it's the great conundrum of, of professional learning in public schools, is we train people simultaneously with the expectation that they're going to do it. I've never seen, there's no other profession like it. It's like, you know, training a pilot while they're actually flying the plane, say, okay, we'll figure it. So, we need to figure, so it's about knowing, looking down the road four years and saying, at this point in time, I want you to be able to do this, and preparing you gradually. I think it was an aha moment that I had, and I digress too much and pontificate, although Ms. Trick Scales really enjoys it. I'm kidding, it's a joke. We got to keep these things light sometimes, folks. It was an aha moment, thank you, Ms. Mendez, where, and it came recently, working in a big district, and I said, you know, we, we oversimplify these major changes and these shifts for teachers. We don't give them nearly enough time in order to get prepared to do it. And then we worry why y'all get anxious, right? So I think that's what you're seeing. You're seeing the, you're seeing the result of really, what was really kind of a poorly thought-out, really initiative from the get-go. Although, you say that we were identified as a model district, so, I mean, maybe we had pockets of efficacy, I'm not sure. But I, I think we're, we're, we're working well on this. I think with the proper degree of teacher input and feedback, we're going to get it right this time by golly. I'm going to make sure of it, okay? Because I don't want to be here next year having the same conversation or two years from now. So we're committed to getting it right now.
I'll be in the audience at the mic.
Okay, I'm getting antsy. Okay, so as an elementary teacher, elementary principal, director of curriculum, I was introduced to Reader's Writers Workshop in, well, Reader's Workshop in 1989 with a pilot. And it is an amorphous concept. I'm looking at teachers, right? Teaching Reader's and Writers Workshop, because it, we have a curriculum, yes, we have a curriculum, but we have a room full of students, and we're trying to meet everyone's needs on their grade level, and it is a concept that requires a lot of training. If you, if you buy a new basal, an integrated literacy approach, and, and they're basals now, that's the old word, right, Dr. Cascon? Basals, yes. Integrated approach.
That's true.
You still have to do a lot of professional development with your teachers. Reading's been around a long time, so whether it's Reader's Workshop or you're using an integrated approach, you still have to train teachers. Now, I grant you, and I, and I understand what you're saying, if we've done this over nine years, I think, as Dr. Cascon said, this is going to be the pinnacle. This is going to be it. We're going to get it right this time. Consistency is what's important. I love when we mention the word evaluation, because that's what we tend not to do in education. I, I made up this little acronym, API. We assess, we plan, we implement, but we never come back around and evaluate. And so we're constantly putting in new stuff, new stuff, new stuff, never figuring out is those stuff we put in working? Do we need to tweak it? Do we need to adjust? And so to hear that we're going to do the evaluation, get the feedback from the teachers, and make adjustments along the way. And I do think that we're going to see an increase in test scores. I think all of that is going to bear fruit for us. And articulation, that's what's important, is having teachers be able to talk to each other and to spend that time talking about what works and best practices. All teachers have best practices, we just hardly ever have a chance to share them. So when we get time to do that, and that's what these labs are providing time for with the new units of study, and I think it's going to make a big difference. And, yes, it's money. I'm glad we can, we can use the Title II funds, but I think we're going to get it perfect this time. I'm so optimistic.
I hope so, because being on the board for three terms, I've heard all those words before. We evaluated it, we did this, next year it's going to be perfect, so I'm holding you to it. Next year it's going to be perfect, because I keep hearing the same phrases, you know, as you said. We, we do implement a lot of stuff. And then a couple of years, the board says, well, how is that program working? How is that program working? Should we keep it? Are, are we fixing it? What are we doing? And we do ask those questions, so, holding you to perfection next year.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, there's no perfection. And, and education is an evolving thing, so it's, but honestly, the same phrases, we ask the same questions every year.
Well, I, I agree.
I feel like I'm hitting the repeat button.
But Dr. Cascon and Ms. Trick Scales, I, I think one of the things that you touched upon that's critical, and, and Ms. Mendez mentioned this, are the feedback loops. Ensuring that from principals as well as from teachers that were listening. When I look back at things like departmentalization, great idea, badly executed initially, and it was not a one-size-foot-all for every school. Every school had to customize it. And so if we continue those feedback loops, and we have regular feedback loops, and it's built into a collaborative process, I, I'd look forward to the results. I do have one little, one little question, one additional question. And I love the book clubs, by the way, and for, especially in the approach to differentiation that that allows. My, one of my questions is though, one of the things a workshop is supposed to do was to encourage kids to have a love for reading as well as to develop fluency, and there's a component I've never seen executed the same way twice, and that was the independent reading. And some people use reading logs, some people don't. Some teachers were encouraging the kid to read in a category that they really liked, but to maybe try to, you know, increase the level of, of complexity and the, and the authors of books they chose by a little bit. Do we have a philosophy or approach towards that that's, that's consistent?
I think independent reading is probably one of the main purposes of the workshop model and what it should lead to independence. If you walk into a teacher's classroom, you will see opportunities for independent reading. The teachers will may begin with a mini lesson, they may have opportunities for strategy groups, they may have opportunity for other things that are taking place, guided reading, but there's also a time for the students to sit and read on their own. They have interest, they have choice, they go book shopping, they have opportunities to read with their partners, they have opportunities to do partner talk, accountable talk, all of those things that they are using to foster a level of independence. Students do, are encouraged to read at home and to read independently. We, we love for that to happen. There's the instructional level as well as the students' independent level. We may not have everyone writing out logs. I don't know that everybody chooses that strategy, but for the teachers who use the strategy to have the children take, keep their logs, that's great, and for those who take accountability in a different way, so the student comes back and then they're talking about their interests, they're sharing it with their peers, they're discussing that in class, or they're writing a, for our younger ones, a book that's, you know, all about what they're reading, and, and they're doing different performance-based assessments with that. So there's different ways to demonstrate independence in addition to the log, but that may not be our, our primary strategy.
Thank you.
So, I am the forever optimist, positive person, so I think, and there's no question, so you're, you're good, you're off the hook. I would just like to say, I think that we are aware of what's going on, we're aware of this, you know, the money that's been spent, we're aware of what we need to do, where we need to go, and I think, just overall, I think we're set up for success. So I think, you know, keeping a positive mindset and holding ourselves accountable as the board and holding those in charge accountable, that falls on us, to ensure. And I think we can only see good things to come.
Yep.
Liaisons, anything?
Just to add as a student liaison, I just have a strong faith that you guys are doing everything you can to improve learning for students and keep the focus on improving learning for students. I remember as a student in Mount Pleasant, reading workshops actually, I would say, improved like my reading, because it kind of like opened my eyes to the, to the opportunities and like the, the kinds of books and the other kinds of genres that I wasn't really like focused into. I was kind of reading a lot of comics and stuff. But, I, I'm sorry, I just thought that maybe if the PD, the public, the personal development does end up creating positive feedback within the, the, the teachers, it can create like a positive feedback loop almost, creating teachers that have better, improved teaching skills, who can in return teach other students, I mean, teach the teachers on how to apply those skills within their classrooms and within their different departments. And it just helps create like a system of improvement within the, the departments that they're in, within, you're talking about English, right? So, reading and writing, and so it can help like just create a foundation to kind of build up on. And so you, as Dr. Cascon said, to kind of create like a perfect, almost, redone system.
Like Sanai, I think it's great that we're promoting consistency in some of these programs like book clubs, because I can't remember being in Liberty, and I think that these work on a level that's not often recognized. Sometimes teachers don't really consider how students can also contribute to the positive feedback loop. I remember specifically being in these book clubs, and when you're in these book clubs, it's more intimate, so students are held accountable on a way they may not be in a classroom. So if a teacher's giving an instruction to an entire classroom, it's kind of easier for a student to fall through the crack and not be accountable for reading. But when you're in that book club, students hold each other accountable, and when you're having these discussions, reading becomes fun and cool and people actually do it. So I think my interest for reading really peaked in middle school, and I would just suggest that we encourage putting students within the positive feedback loop, see how they're interacting with it, and make sure it's not just teachers enforcing it, but students, encouraging students to be accountable as well, because that's how it's going to work from the bottom up.
Thank you. And, and so I think something that you're saying is important for the teachers as well. So if the students have opportunity to sit with their peers to read and discuss, our elementary teachers need opportunities to meet with their peers to discuss. And teaching, especially at the elementary level, continues to be one of the most isolated professions, because the teacher is in their classroom all day long with their students. And so then, by virtue of professional development, it's not solely we're teaching you something you don't know, as much as it is also availing the opportunity for the staff to meet with their peers, to discuss, to share, to view, to talk about what they're doing, to build capacity, to build confidence, and to share, because we have to be able to share across the district all of the things that are happening. We do have amazing work happening in our elementary classrooms. And so then, the opportunity for them to share, this is what I'm doing, this is what's fantastic, this is what's working, this is how the students are really learning from this. That's not going to come from, it doesn't matter, you can pay the best consultant in the world, right? It's going to come from the teachers sharing the experiences that they're having with each other, and this provides an additional opportunity for that.
I'd love to see more ways to make that more easily possible. You know, right now, I, I'm sure you've seen it, we're in the middle of the 12 days of Twitter, that the, you know, I think it's going on outside of the district too, but that our technology specialists have really been promoting, and I think, you know, it's, I love when I'm in the W O to World and when they do the monthly chats, I think that's really helpful. But I know I'd love to see more ways to get people in the same room too. I know how challenging that is with elementary. You know, I think the other thing I would just point out is that, you know, from a management perspective, when something's, you know, existed for nine years, it's, one of the challenges is that you need to have a champion for it, right? And, you know, I think the nature of public education sadly is that when people shift jobs, it's not always the smooth, okay, I'm going to work with my successor for the next four months, and we're going to, you know, I'm going to hand over the reins perfectly. It's, you know, I think the transitions can be more sudden than that, so you lose your champions. And then also, the nature is, you know, we tend to be reactive, and, you know, yes, we need to work on Reader's Writers Workshop, but at the same time, you know, what's, what's the new thing that's coming at us, whether it's, you know, I'm sure there was, I would assume, I wasn't on the board for those nine years, but you were, I'm sure the part, I'm sure that, you know, NJ Ask and then Park took over a lot of brain time, and then departmentalization was a big thing, and, you know, every couple of years, there's something else that sort of takes precedence. So hopefully, we, we've got the leadership and the ability to stay focused on it now and make it work.
And something you mentioned, Ms. Mendez, made me think, since, sorry, but since departmentalization was my idea for third, fourth, and fifth grade, and we only did it for fourth and fifth grade, now, wouldn't the teachers who were focused on English, language, arts have time together? Because on the PD committee, we had planned that time. I don't know what happened. So at a later stage, if you could just give, give an update on departmentalization and how it's working at K-5. Right, not tonight, obviously, yes. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're done with that section. Questions from the public on agenda items.
We have HIV report.
Oh, HIV report, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay. Real quick, so there are, just to kind of go in with the, kind of new organizational system, you can see that there were report, the reports that were forwarded on November 18th are now, you know, on the agenda for approval, and then there are three new reports that are being presented here on 12/9. I have reviewed all of them. I would like to make just one note. It's not mentioned within the discipline imposed, but for number, incident number 014 at Liberty, I would just like to note that while there was no discipline imposed per se, there were conferences with the administrator, parent, student assistance counselor, and there was a restorative practice implemented for that particular case. I could, you know, provide more detail individually in confidential setting, but I just wanted to note that. And I will correct it on the record for future reports.
Mr. Calabano. Oh, never mind. I'm all over the place. Now, questions from the public on agenda items only. Come on up, you'll have three minutes, just give us your name and address.
Robyn Isarlas, 22 Yale Terrace. Thank you for the report on the Reader's Writers Workshop. I have a few questions. Am I too close? Am I too short? Thank you. Yes, it's okay. Thank you. So, first question is, I know that there, I've done some searches on some of the critiques of the program, and I know that there's a concern about how grammar instruction is implemented at the elementary level, and I'm just curious how that's happening here. Number two, I'm curious about how this flexible program will be evaluated. Ms. Trick Scales talked about test scores. I'm hoping there's going to be other ways of evaluating the success of this, especially in light of the amazing things the student liaisons just said, if there's a way that we can get students involved in that. we can get students involved in that evaluation, but also teachers, of course, as well. And the third is more of a comment, but it would seem to me that nobody wanted to talk about the disruption of the four years that we had under the Retsky regime. So I do think that that should be said as really taking us backwards from any kind of moving forward. We are optimistic with Dr. Kascón. We can move forward, but I do think we should put it on the record. But also, just in terms of the ability to train and support teachers, it would seem that the involuntary movement of elementary school teachers to different levels, that is, I know happening in at least one elementary school, may really be contrary to the ability to have teachers really, you know, be trained to use this and stick with the grade level that they're being trained. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone further? All right, yeah, come on up.
So I'm supposed to introduce my address?
Yes, just give us your name and address and then anything on the agenda.
Anita Davis, 9 Mountain Way. I wanted to understand in terms of the readers and writers workshop from an elementary standpoint, from the standpoint of, and I take it from the lady, the student at the end, what she mentioned, she said, when I was in the book club in the middle school, it, that's where my interest developed. And I'm seeking to understand, how can we develop that interest earlier at the elementary level? Because I think once they get to the middle school, you want them to soar. So the challenge that I'm having here is that I have a son that was at the Gregory School. I had to move him over to Kelly for the Orton Gillahan program because it's not at every school. So things of that sort, I think it should be across the district and there should be other tools in place to help the student, not just learn how to read, but also develop that interest. We don't want to wait to the middle school for them to develop that interest. You want that love of reading and even if they have challenges, what tools can be applied at each one of the schools? And I, I don't see that. Now, Dr. Pilar and her team are doing a wonderful job. They're doing an outstanding job, but I shouldn't have had to move over to Kelly for that. It wasn't at Gregory. And going back to the walking to school program, I used to walk my son to school. I can't now, he has to take the bus. So I, I just want to get an understanding at the elementary, my son is in the second grade, he is struggling with reading, the tools are limited. However, now that we're at Kelly, we're seeing an improvement, but it should have been at Gregory as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone further? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Kascón.
Just going, I can speak to some extent to these questions. As it relates to the, you know, relative to kind of the lost momentum, you know, I think that the, the good news is when we look at specifically at our performance, you know, our ELA and our math performance on the elementary level are, as that being one measure, right? And arguably with some limited reliability and validity, right? But, you know, those scores have remained upwardly trending, right? So I think that that's good news, right? So even amidst some of this methodological inconsistency, we've still managed to kind of, you know, maintain positive trajectory as far as the state test goes. As far as the evaluation, I think there are a number of ways in which we evaluate. Obviously standardized test scores are one. We also have, you know, our internal measures. We have, you know, Fountas and Pennell, which is the primary means by which we assess reading level. We have, you know, the MAP assessment, which we're continuing to kind of look at how we can leverage that and how we can get teachers more comfortable utilizing that data. But I think there's also, you know, the qualitative assessments as well, namely the feedback that, some of which we've talked about, the feedback that we get from teachers, just in terms of their comfort level, their knowledge level with the program. And also our supervision of instruction system, right? So one of the things we're doing now, in fact tomorrow, we're meeting with the elementary principals and Ms. Hanrady, Mr. Mendez are coming in and the main agenda item for that meeting is really kind of, you know, working on interrelated reliability for principals in terms of look fours and lessons and things of that nature. So through our supervision of instruction, our observations, knowing that we're all kind of looking for the same types of things and being able to give that feedback to teachers is also a manner by which we're evaluating the implementation. So those are just a few ideas in terms of how we're evaluating. You had one other point, did you not? Yeah, you know, it's funny, this is the second large district I've worked in. And the last district I worked in, I was always amazed by the amount we moved teachers, you know? And I go, okay, so it's a big district and the law of averages, there's going to be more moving, you know? And I'm simpatico with that idea of, you know, when possible, we need to try and establish some consistency. And I think particularly when we're implementing new initiatives, it doesn't help then when all of a sudden you're asking a teacher to make an adjustment to a new grade level on top of a new methodology. So I can tell you that when, in looking at requested transfers, I can tell you that I will be looking at those very carefully and very critically. With regard to the, Ms. Davis, yes, you're right, you're right. While I think we have, we have pockets of good, you know, intervention program and basic skills program and for lack of a better word, remedial program in all of our schools, is our system of intervention and remedial support uniform, is it consistent? The answer to that question is no. That's the bad news. The good news is, is, you know, Mr. Mendez and I have had a lot of conversations about this. We've been talking about it a lot, planning a lot, and it's on our roadmap and starting now in terms of trying to establish consistency in what our intervention services are in each of our schools, including but not limited to if we are going to offer OG in one school that we're offering in all of our schools. So you are astute in identifying that as, as an area of weakness, but one we're aware of and that we're actively working on, starting now. You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Personnel, items one through six and the addendum, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure. I'd like to say congratulations to Deborah Franek for retiring. I guess I'm sad too. My son's actually had her as a science teacher at the high school years ago. But thank you for your dedication and your service. And also to Mary Malinowski, I'm sure I messed up her name.
Ms. Mal?
Ms. Mal, that's easier, who's retiring as well, 32 years. So thank them both for their service.
Fantastic, yes.
And you also have two extensions, under appointments, 3A Edward Duncan and under letter G, Charlene Davis Williams. I'll email them to you, John.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
With the extensions, right?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes. All right, up next, curriculum and instruction, items one through five. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Let's see. Yes, we discussed that other thing.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
I, I did have a question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, couldn't see you.
But perhaps, I may not get an answer tonight. I was just fascinated by genetic training certification. Does anyone know what that is?
That was an agenda question as well.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's, it's arguably a bit of a misnomer, you know, in terms of thinking, you know, being in the network, it's, it's, it's really connected to the work that, that Mr. Santiago's department been doing in terms of hardening our, you know, our cybersecurity. But genetic is, you know, is really more connected to technology.
Genes.
Not, yeah, not, not actual organic genomes. Exactly. There you go, perfect. See, there we go. We're stronger together. We're smarter together.
Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes. All right, up next, finance, special services, items one through four and business office, items one through nine. May I have a motion? May I have a second?
I have a question.
Do you have a second and then devote the discussion?
Actually, I want to table something. I'll second it, but I would like to table item number seven, Stonegate Associates, the proposal for $4,875. We received the backup COPS grant that was submitted earlier today, which is 70-plus pages. And while I leafed through it, I did not have sufficient time to go through the 70-plus pages. And the priority list on the Stonegate presentation that was done earlier this year, I haven't been able to compare to that thick document, which we literally just got this afternoon. So I'd like the opportunity to go over it. And if we table it till next week, I'd be happy with that. I, I understand, but, you know, the way how it is worded, they're talking about surveys and they did surveys this spring. I just want to know how many times are we going to pay for surveys to determine what priorities we need when they gave us a priority list earlier this spring. So I'm still having trouble with this and I'd like the opportunity to table it and just take a look at it.
I'd also like to comment on the same item, maybe, so you can maybe answer them all at once. But first I have a question. Mr. Calavano, do you know, we've spent a lot of money on Stonegate to do the security audit. We're spending money right now with Stonegate to do the long-range facility, not wrong, no, it's a long-range facility, but to, and when they did the, the security audit, they gave us priorities for the whole district, they gave us priorities by building, there are multiple priority lists. And I guess what I'm concerned about is, I, I think I'm on the same page with Mrs. Mordecai on this one. I'm first concerned about how we're managing the relationship. If we, if they're a long-term strategic partner and not just to quote a vendor, we should be looking at rather than get, you know, paid $10,000 or whatever here and then another $5,000 here, I'd like to just kind of look at how we're managing the relationship and how the priorities that have been already assigned are aligning. Because I feel like we were, you know, we should be looking at that rather than paying to make sure, I just want to make sure we're not overlapping in terms of what we pay for and that the path that's been laid out for us is clear. And then there's a second part of that, that I'm not sure you can address right now, but we talked, we've talked many times, I've brought this up a billion times, that aligning our physical security and safety is supposed to align with our cybersecurity and safety. I mentioned when Atlanta was held hostage with their ransomware, now more recently, much closer to home, Livingston. And we're supposed to be looking at how to integrate our cybersecurity and where the cybersecurity audit is going to come in because the cyber portion also governs much of the physical security, given that everything is done through computer chips. And so it's kind of a two-part, one, how we're managing the Stonegate relationships who are not going to get nickelled and dimed and treated as a real strategic partnership and making sure the priorities we were already given align with new stuff we're paying for. And then two, as we're looking at spending more money, how is it aligning with our cybersecurity and have we identified a cybersecurity firm yet?
Right. So totally understand where you're coming from. I'd like to be able to provide a little bit of just perspective. So, you know, I make this recommendation on this motion, you know, with, with a confidence that the work that they are proposing to do hasn't been done, that we, we don't have that, the information that they're going to be providing through this additional audit is not presently in the report. Now, what does that mean? So, but let's talk about your strategic partner point, Mr. Robertson, because I think it's a good one. And you're right. Looking forward to the 2021 school year, I would actually like to see, you know, maybe just a flat annual contract with Stonegate Associates and kind of have them be a third-party school security consultant for us. Let's look at this project, for example. And basically, the, the nuts and bolts of this project, and that's really what this is about, is all of our foyers and all of our schools being fully equipped with all the state-of-the-art technology. Now, what does that involve? It involves a number of things. It involves the technology side. So what hardware is going to be in there and where is it going to be placed? Now, now, Mr. Santiago is definitely going to have an integral part in that, but that's just one piece of it. Then you have the contracting side of it. Are there physical structural changes that need to be made to this space? And if so, what are they and where, where is equipment going to be placed? So there's that piece. So while in the initial security audit, they might have said, yes, you know, in each of the foyers, you should do a double entry point, you should have a camera, you should have this, that's a, that's a long way from having something that we can go out to an RFP to a vendor and say, this is the scope of work, what would it cost? If we went out to, for RFP now with what we have in the security audit, they'd be like, that's nice, but we need to come out to each and every one of those sites and figure out exactly what it is you need to do to each one of those foyers. So you have Mr. Ziggy involved, you have Mr. Santiago involved, and then you have the security side. So the question becomes is, and this point was astutely brought up by one of the board members in some of our feedback earlier, was who's, who's the PM on this? Who's, who's the program, who's the project manager on this? And, you know, so, so that's the other role which Stonegate can also play, is they're kind of bringing, now, I'm, I'm involved in it as well and to some extent, I'm a PM to some extent, you know, Mr. Calavano's a PM, we all kind of own it, but who's kind of, has that lens that can see how it all comes together and that sort of Stonegate? Just one final point, which is that if we table this, we're now going on, on several months, two months. Okay, okay. All right, that's, I mean, that's, that's true, you know, that's, that's fair.
We have a meeting next Monday.
That's fair.
And to, to Mr. Mordecai's point.
I just don't want to delay the work any longer.
Because I, I flipped through, but it's, but you were on the committee that wrote that grant, so you probably read that grant.
On the superintendent telling us that the, that, that what was previously done does not include this level of work, the way I understand it, it's the equivalent of having a contractor come out and say, you know, all right, so, so what do you want to do for your kitchen? All right, you need new fridge, you need new counters, you want to do granite, or you want to do the quartz, what are you going to do, what are the cabinets do you want? It's, it's a different scope of work to come in and say, you need, here's the, here's the punch list, here's the items you need to buy, here's the wood that needs to be bought, you know, here's, here are the drawings.
I understand.
And that's what I am hearing is what needs to be done and I'm comfortable doing this now and not.
I want to make sure the $300,000 grant we just got aligns with both the work they did for us early this year and that there's nothing duplicative. And I don't know that because we just got those 100 pages this afternoon.
Yep.
You were on the committee to write the COPS grant, so maybe you read it already, but the rest of us just got it today.
And not only that.
Because the COPS grants tells you, in the COPS grants, you, your committee outlined exactly what kind of security we needed. We're just looking at the COPS grant now. So don't know if what's in the COPS grant is aligned with what's in the security audit.
To an extent, it doesn't matter because the COPS, what I mean is the COPS grant was, the grant application was based on what the presentation made, but then part of the grant process was saying, okay, this is allowable, this is not, we're going to give you money for this, we're not going to give you money for that. So what matters is taking what the grant was for and establishing that plan, which may not include some of the things that were on the original presentation.
And that's my point. It might not include some things, but we have not took a chance to read it.
Can I, can I just share, can I just share one other procedural piece with you, just so, just to give you a little insight into, you know, kind of how this ended up on the agenda, how we moved this forward? So we had a district school safety team meeting, which was a large group. Out of that meeting, I made the call to establish a smaller steering committee, the purpose of which was to look at the, at the security audit and then, and the grant, and determine what next steps would be. And from that meeting, and that involved Mr. Calavano and I, Mr. Ziggy, it involved our school resource officer, it involved Stonegate Associates. And from that, we kind of prioritized our foyers. Out of the work that it's proposing, we kind of prioritize it. That's something we wanted to move on in the short term. And then that was what kind of led to, okay, well, what exactly will that involve? You know, and if we're going to go out for an RFP, which we will, for, you know, for a vendor to actually do the work for us, what will we need in order to do that? And that's kind of where this came from. So I only mention that and I'm not discounting your position, Mr. Mordecai, I think, I appreciate your diligence. I just want to give the board some insights into that this motion came out of kind of a multi-week deliberative process, you know, that involved kind of inclusive meetings with various stakeholders, so.
But to your point earlier too, Dr. Kascón, if there's the opportunity to identify a But to your point earlier too, Dr. Cascon, if there's the opportunity to identify, and we need to identify, so we don't go through another bubble incident, who, because you can't be project manager for everything. You're the overall, you're, you're the boss, right? John is, is the boss for certain areas and reporting to you, but neither of you can be the project manager for all the minute things that get done. So if they are to perform a function as a project manager, and you have on one side the $300,000 COPS grant to administer, and you will have to go through an RFP process, which a project manager should be helping to oversee, right, as well as to execute. And then you're going to go into a budget cycle in a couple of months and look at that, too. Wouldn't it behoove us to take a couple of days, I mean, you know, some of the priorities to look at, talking with them about what would that structure and, and, and that money look like? So we're not bouncing from month to month, or every couple of weeks, with, you know what, it's going to be five grand for this, and maybe 10 grand over here for this, and look at what the project management role is going to look like. What happens after this and this next step, and what does, you know, the RFP process looks like, and what their role would be, and just maybe scope that out with them. That, that, you know, they've done this a billion times.
That's fair.
No.
That's fair.
And just give, give us a week. I mean, I, I trust you completely, but as a board member, as you'll certainly learn very shortly, you know, we still have to be, we're part of the check and balance of the system, and have to feel that we understand what it is we're approving.
I mean, ultimately, you know, as, I'm obviously not a non-voting member of the board, and I think there's a motion on the floor, I don't know if it's received a second, but.
No, no second, yeah.
All right, I, I have one more point. In the district safety meeting that you had.
You made the motion.
Didn't you second? I made the motion, didn't you second?
I seconded it.
Oh, you, oh, you made the motion?
I made the motion.
Terry made the motion.
Now we have a discussion.
Okay, that's true.
But I made a motion to table.
Right. So we still need a second for the table.
I'll second the table.
Yes, for that one item.
Motion, Mr. Robertson, second.
And not for more than a week, not indefinitely.
So during the district safety meeting, was the EI Architects' Long-Range Facilities Plan discussed? Because we don't have that documented as yet, and if we're working on a long-range facilities plan, that's going to intersect with whatever.
Right.
Facilities upgrade you're going to make with Stonegate, with the COPS grant.
Yep.
Everybody should be in the same room, and I don't feel like that happened here. I mean, it may have, but we haven't seen that long-range facilities plan, which we paid for earlier this year.
Right. So I think, you know, the, the way to look at it is, is kind of, you know, follow the money, so to speak. So, you know, these, these, the, you know, the physical plant modifications or enhancements or renovations that will be necessary in order to equip the foyers are arguably kind of rising to the, you know, kind of the top of the priorities in the long-range facilities plan. And they're being funded through the grant, so they don't necessarily need to be considered in terms of how we kind of, how we, you know, how are we kind of offsetting those or kind of mapping those out with our other priorities, competing for our local funds. But you're right, you're absolutely right. And what can happen is, is the, the LRFP can be kind of updated retroactively to include what, what work we're planning on doing in the foyer. But I, I will tell you that the work that we're looking at in the foyer, from a structural change standpoint, is fairly limited. You know, you have, for example, you know, in one school, we have to finish the, you know, the buzzing capacity on one of the doors. You know, you might have to have kind of a shelf built, you know, or a mount for a camera. So the, really, the scope of the actual contracting in those spaces is relatively limited, but admittedly should be included in the LRFP.
Yeah, and, but when you start this work, you have to file the long-range facilities plan with Trenton. And have they given you a draft, or where are we on that document?
Into, oh, the LRFP?
Yeah, from EI, because you have to file that with Trenton when you start the construction.
Right.
That's why I'm wondering.
And with the type of work with the vestibules, that's something that will not be part of a long-range plan. I think the only thing that's going to be part of a long-range plan would be the replacement of all the interior doors, and I forget which school we're looking at, but that's probably the only thing that must be included in LRFP. And if it's not, then at the time we award the contract, we can also amend the long, long-range plan to include that project.
And there was part two of my question on how the cybersecurity, which directly interfaces with the physical security, where are we on that?
Yeah. So, Mr. Santiago, you know, based upon your feedback, Mr. Robertson, I had Mr. Santiago create a, basically a cross-reference document, which kind of laid out the various, kind of the suite of services that a professional cybersecurity firm would do through an audit, and the things that, you know, our internal folks are doing currently. And his assessment is that the, you know, that the money that we would spend on a firm to come in to do an audit is better spent by, really, on our own expertise, our own equipment, our own services, you know, than to pay all that money for an audit. And then we would have to then additionally expend the money on the resources or the equipment or what have you. I can re-forward that, if you want to read it.
Mr. Santiago certified in cybersecurity. Number one. Number two, has Mr. Santiago ever had to address a ransomware issue or some of the issues that even districts as large as Atlanta have, and now our neighbor Livingston? I mean, the, the point of having a cybersecurity firm isn't that the money will just be thrown to the wind, it's that you hire somebody who's actually not just doing this from day to day, but who's actually addressed these issues before for another district or a government entity, and has, you know, other experiences.
Well, I can tell you that Mr. Santiago and his, and his number, number two, Mr. Pickenich, are, you may have remembered, are actually enrolled in a fairly rigorous cybersecurity certification program through Rutgers this year. But again, I mean, you know, this is, you know, if it's something that the board, you know, wishes to go out for RFP, what I would suggest is, is maybe we could have Mr. Santiago present at greater length, or something of that nature. But if it's ultimately something that the board feels that they, you know, they wanted us to take a closer look at in terms of an RFP, we could certainly do that.
Do we know what happened in Livingston, and how?
We do. So, so Livingston, so the, you know, Livingston hosts their email internally, and that was really where that generated from, by virtue of the fact that we are, we host through Google. Google has a whole set of kind of.
Cyber, yep.
Yeah, which, you know, that's where that came from. It was an internal, an internal email bug that got them.
Okay, so we know that answer for Atlanta and for other places. I guess what I'm getting to is, we need to be able to answer that question and have those answers, and know for larger, more complex entities than ourselves, how that happened.
Right. Right. You know, I think that what I would, what I would ask the board to do is, if you would, if you would go back and take a close look at the document which Mr. Santiago prepared. I think it, it, it gives you a good sense of, of how we're planning and what we're doing. That's not to say that your point may not still, you know, have merit, Mr. Robertson. I think it's just what I would ask is that you've taken a close look at what Mr. Santiago put together.
I'll, I'll look at it again.
I appreciate it.
Dr. Cascon, if I may, I'm pretty sure we have a cyber RFP somewhere in draft. I remember we all reviewed it earlier this year, maybe, no, maybe last year, November, December.
I, I think Ronnie, I think Ron Charles sent something around to the board that he'd used in his business or career or something, and I think we looked it over, I don't think it ever went out, because I think we started the Homeland Security process.
You know, it might be, it might be something.
You're right.
Might be something we, we may want to consider for building into the 2021 budget. I would, you know, I would argue that, you know, based upon some kind of fluid costs, you know, that were, we've been absorbing, that it, it may not be a prudent time to take on what I imagine would probably be a fairly significant cost to do an audit like that. But I think it's certainly something we could consider for 2021. I'm certainly not against it.
Okay, thank you.
Where are we?
So we have to vote on the motion to table.
Vote on the motion to table.
Number seven, until next week.
All right.
Mrs. Marklinger.
So, just a quick comment. I think, you know, there are a lot of concurrent projects going on here, and I think that's where the hesitancy is coming in, and kind of the uncomfortableness, I'll, I'll say, with so many projects going on, and I think there's some post-traumatic stress from the bubble. So I think, you know, so I'm going to vote yes to table till our next meeting, which is Monday, next Monday. Just for the sense of, and if I could ask, that maybe we just get a side-by-side of what each of our vendors that we are hoping to have a strategic partnership with is doing, just to make it more clear for all the folks on the board, and maybe that would help ease some, some of the.
I know we have, we have the parade of honors next week.
Oh, that's right.
No, but that's okay. Stonegate wasn't able to come this week, but, you know, perhaps we could have them come next week and speak a little bit to that. But we can also put together, like, something tabular that kind of lays it out. But I also think, Mr. Robertson, I think his point is well-taken, which is, you know, this may not be the last we call upon Stonegate this year to serve in a consultative manner, and would it make more sense to kind of have a more long-term arrangement where we lump a bunch of services under what may be more money, but at least in a flat-fire retainer, right?
Mr. Robertson?
This is the vote to table?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Uh, yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper? Why not? Yes.
So now we have the remainder of the resolution that we have to move, well, we have to move in seconds, so now we just have to take a vote on it.
Right, this is everything except number seven.
Right.
Mrs. Marklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, and I have a few abstentions, and I will send you the list of names by email later. Linda Aene, Lisa Alston, Corey Nicole Bell, Moses Scott, Karen Skiers, Robin Serbino. Thank you.
And President Alper? Yes. All right. Next up, reports, which will be items one through two, plus an addendum, which I'll read, which relates to what you did earlier in closed. Resolve that the Board of Education affirm the district's determination regarding HIV investigation number 090-002. So motion for items one through two, plus that addendum.
I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Marklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, and I'm abstaining from the HIV, as I was not present.
President Alper? Uh, same. Yes, I'm one and two, and abstain on the addendum. Okay. All right. Petitions and hearings of citizens, 33 minutes at the mic on any topic, any topic at all.
Good evening. Jennifer Tunnycliff, 8 Hartshorn Terrace. I'm here tonight because I, there is a, there was a first reading done in our town council about a very large development that will come into play in what's known as the Executive Drive area. They're planning 425 apartment units, and this would be without income tax revenue for 30 years. It's a $100 million tax abatement for this, for the developer of this property. And with that amount of units, there was a, a study done by the National Association of Home Builders that used U.S. census data that states there are 4.45.6 children per 100 owner-occupied units compared with 49.6 children per 100 renter-occupied units. So we're looking at one to two children per unit, so we're looking at another 200 children in our district. I'm wondering if anyone on the board who is, I don't know who the town council liaison is, has talked to our council members or has heard of this, but this is, could have serious implications for us as a board and for our students. And knowing that we're already strapped with space here in the district, I think it's something that should concern all of us at this time. And I'm hoping that, you know, our council and mayor have reached out to Dr. Cascon about this issue, and that we're going to look to work more collaboratively in the future. If not, we need to stop working in silos in our town and be able to collaborate on stuff that's going to affect us here, you know, our children and the resources of our school board. Thank you. Oh, and I also wanted to say, sorry, just how nice it was to see all of the recognitions tonight. I think it was a really wonderful presentation, and especially not just our teachers, but certainly our bus drivers who work so hard to keep our students safe, not only to and from school, but to and from athletic events and everything. So thanks so much for your recognition of everyone. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you. You know, it, it's on my radar. Ms. Marklinger, are the liaisons, we haven't met yet, we will. We haven't had a lot of pilots in West Orange before. My understanding is that for the one pilot that was done, which was the Phase One of Edison, where there were very few students expected, there was an arrangement made, and I think this is relatively common in worlds where the municipality and the school boards have good relationships, which we do, where the town said, for each student you end up with out of here, we'll make a payment of X. I don't remember what the X was, it was before my time, but I think we'd be, you know, looking to negotiate something similar. And I don't expect, you know, I obviously can't speak for what will happen, but I don't expect that there would be, you know, this isn't Jersey City, I'm not expecting that there's going to be a problem there.
Are we going in order?
No. So Jersey City has a reputation for doing a ton of pilots and the school district never getting a penny of it. And I don't think that would end up being, I can't imagine that would end up being the situation here in West Orange. I can't imagine that anyone in elected office on either body would be successful in a world where the school board's not seeing money out of pilots.
If I may, President Alper. Earlier this year, I had shared with the board a resolution for pilots from a neighboring district, well, not that neighboring, one county over. And in that, in that resolution, I don't know if you recall it, basically, it says exactly what you're saying, but it's in writing that says that we will be made whole in the event that the 200 units are built. But it never came to fruition. I guess I can circulate it again, you guys can take a look at it, pass it next year, pass it next week.
So that was a joint resolution that both bodies passed together?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's something that could certainly happen, if there's, you know.
I'll circulate it again.
Discussion on that, but we'll, you know, bring it up with liaisons and, you know, and probably have a larger meeting as well with the mayor and the superintendent as well involved, and figure out what's going to happen and what the solution will be.
And in addition to that, I want to renew my request for an RFP for a new demography study. I've been asking for.
That's on the list for next year.
Okay.
All right.
Keep it on the list.
President Alper, just one comment on that. And this is a follow-up on Ms. Mordecai's comment. You know, if you look back at the last demographic study, it was based upon factors that don't currently exist. It was based upon not only census data, but it was based upon birth rates, and didn't look at how many people are moving here from, you know, Brooklyn and throughout New York City, as well as from surrounding townships. And we do need a new demographic study, but it needs to be able to take a new approach for next year, and.
Well, as you may remember, that the last time that this came before the board, before I was on the board, there was a proposal for a demographic study with, I think, six components, one of which was exactly what you're asking, and that board did not approve that sixth component.
It wasn't, when I proposed, actually was.
The next board I'm hoping will choose better.
It was, actually, a local census is what I proposed, and none of them were able to actually do that.
But the exact thing you're asking for was proposed and not approved.
It's not, not in that manner. But we have, something to look at, since you're already following this, is to look back at the numbers that we have for apartments that are going to be built in the valley, which will be a minimum of 100, possibly 200. There's apartments in the Highland Pavilion that were in litigation for years, and originally was a number over 900 that I believe is going to be half that. But we need to take a comprehensive look at all the developments, and their impact in downtown still hasn't even been completed. And you're looking at townhouses that will be built as well, and what the impact is going to be on the school system, and, and frankly.
I think there's broad agreement that we're going to need to go out for RFP for an updated demographic study at this point.
More than 200 kids out of 425 apartments. So, and that would, Mount Pleasant and Kelly, the ones that are nearest, would be, are already at capacity. already at capacity. But I look forward to your survey and following up on that vigorously. And thank you.
If you recall, the last demographic study said we had room at the high school for 600 more kids. I don't know how that's possible, because I know at lunchtime they're just brushing each other in the hallway, so I can't imagine there's room for 600 more kids in this building. But that's what that study said.
Well, and if I might... In addition to the redevelopment and the new development that's coming, pre-K is also on its way.
Yep.
And so when we're looking at the demographic study for just what is and what might be, we've really got to talk about the possibility of perhaps 400 four-year-olds, which would be an average kindergarten class size. And so it's a, it's a much bigger challenge than we might think.
Yep.
Agreed.
Speaking of pre-K, Dr. Cascone, is there an update on the Betty Madalena School playground equipment? My favorite question.
That's a great question. It's actually, it's on my whiteboard. So we have a, we worked with Pastor Terry to agree upon a design, you know, so we have the specs on that. And, you know, I'm thinking that it'll be a spring project at this point, right, Mr. Calavano? So that'll, we'll break ground on that project with them in the spring, and, you know, it'll be installed, you know, probably by the end of the spring.
Great. Closing out public comment now. Board member reports. Mrs. Triggs Scales?
I'm going to keep them very brief, but this evening was certainly an attitude of gratitude, and it was wonderful that we were able to recognize so many of our staff members and administrators for their service to our students. Felt very good, and it also just proves the point that it takes a village to run a school district. So we have the head of the village. And then it takes all the other moving parts to deliver the quality education that we're providing our youngsters. And I just wanted to say that I did attend, along with the rest of the board members, the football and cheer banquet the other night. And I, and I have to quote Coach Grant. We probably have some of the nicest kids. That, that's been my assessment in the short time that I've been so involved, so involved in such a short time here in West Orange, but I have a lot to compare it to. And I was also here for the choral concert. And it warms my heart to see how our kids celebrate each other and how kind they are to each other and how they support each other. That doesn't happen everywhere. I, I tell you, that does not happen everywhere. But in every, at every event that I have gone to where there are students performing, the support from their fellow classmates has been outstanding. And so I just wanted to mention that. And our liaisons left, but I thought Sanai said something about a green program? Is that what he said?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I know that folks in town are actually trying to get our students much more involved through the sustainability grants, that kind of thing. But also, our Green West Orange and other groups are really interested in having our youngsters involved in cleaning up the brook? The pond? The pond? Dangren Pond. I'll get it right. I've only lived around the corner for 35 years. I should know the name of the pond. And, and cleaning up that area from the high school. And so I, I want to talk to Sanai when we get together again in a couple of weeks and see how we can really get that going, because spring would be certainly a good time to do it. That's it for me.
All right. Ms. Mordecai?
Sure. I have a couple, and I'm going to cherry pick and leave some things for next week in the interest of brevity. I want to follow up on a couple of things. I did the Betty School, but Dr. Cascone, I know we've been working on a special ed employee manual. Just want to know where we are with that. And a special ed parent manual as well. Let's see. Kelly School, you weren't here for this, but I, it's a Kelly School parent in the audience. A few years ago, when we renamed Pleasant Dale to Kelly School, Montclair State University came out. We cemented a partnership, or so we thought, with them for STEM and for various other offerings, and nothing has happened. I know when you started, I hit you with my multi-page list of to-dos, as each board member did, and I just want to keep that on the radar. In renaming Pleasant Dale to Kelly, we were supposed to have a strategic partnership with Montclair State to have STEM programs, K, pre-K through 12. They were going to first start with Kelly School, and nothing happened. But that was a district-wide initiative. So if you could please follow up with Dr. Polara?
Yep. I remember we were talking.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, I just, I was reorganizing my office today, and I...
You found my list?
I found that. I found that folder I had started, so I'm, I'm back on it. I'm glad you mentioned it. See, you were reading my mind.
Oh, very good. Very good. Dr. Cho isn't here, but I just want to keep it on the radar. The gym floor at Kelly School, we were going to come up with a solution. So keep that on your radar as well. We mentioned the demography study. And West Orange Mountaineer Academy, earlier this year, we got an update, and then we got a new leader. Would just like an update on how it is now with our new leader on that program. Back in the day, it was called the Bedside Enhancement Program. Not my favorite name, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. Horrible name. ASAP and B-SAP. We discussed that we would, I asked for quarterly reports, but I believe Ms. Merklinger and others asked for a monthly report. Just want to also add that to your list. And actually, in purging my stuff at home, I found the original document that started ASAP, so I will scan that and email that around. It was so long ago now. You were going to meet with A.D. Bligh and Mr. Moore to determine regular reporting?
On ASAP?
On ASAP and B-SAP.
I had forwarded, I think it was last, in the last couple of weeks that I forwarded an ASAP report.
Yeah, but both Ms. Merklinger and I didn't think that was sufficient. We wanted a little more information, but I'm sure you'll get to that. On CTE, following up on the meeting between Nancy Mullen and the West Orange Chamber of Commerce and various local businesses to form strategic partnerships to provide internships, apprenticeships for CTE students. I know this week I mentioned to you about the, we, we had a relationship with the animal hospital on Eagle Rock Avenue, and I know students who actually went there for internships and eventually got jobs there and furthered their studies at Rutgers. So I just wanted to make sure that that partnership with the animal hospital is still in place, and also to increase the offerings through the Chamber of Commerce. And finally, the West Orange African Heritage Organization meeting will be December 18th, and their special guest is Dr. J. Scott Cascone. So it's December 18th at 7:00 PM at West Orange High School in the Library Media Center. We're looking forward to hearing your presentation, and President Althea Twetton is excited to host you.
I'm excited to be there, actually. Looking forward to that.
And my, my final thing, I should take a page out of Ms. Merklinger's book and, and finish on something good, but I, I'm sorry. You know, I am very disappointed, as you know, that we are canceling the policy workshop meeting that was scheduled for this week. Policies this year was, was pretty trying, pretty challenging with the transition from New Jersey School Board policies to Strauss ESME. And the result is, we haven't passed quite, you know, a lot of policies this year. So I am pretty upset about that. In particular, one policy I think we should pass, and we should have passed it a month or two ago, was the equity policy. We've been talking about equity for years, and in particular, this year, we made equity a goal, but we don't have an equity policy. And I know when we submitted the comprehensive equity plan to the state, I was told that the African, what is it? The, I forget what the phrase is now, but that policy that's in place, the affirmative action policy for personnel and affirmative action policy for curriculum and instruction is equivalent to the equity policy. No, it's not. So I would like to see that happen sooner than later, because the equity policy should be a part of the comprehensive equity plan. And the affirmative action policy is, is not it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Robertson?
Thank you. To dovetail on one of the things Ms. Mordecai just mentioned, I believe the plan we submitted to the state actually referred to an equity policy, so it's urgent that we actually deliver that. So it's real. Starting first off on happiness, I did miss, I missed the high school choral concerts, but I attended Liberty's, and it was such a joy. The kids were amazing. And Mr. Sanfi has become such a popular music teacher that the Liberty, for, for both the chorus and the Liberty singers, the, the groups have doubled. So he went from, almost doubled, he went from about 60 kids who signed up to over 110 kids to sign up. So he's very, very popular, and he's, he's really taking them to a higher level in terms of, of their singing and, and performance and the dance moves that go with it, and just so proud of how they're doing. And that was, it was a wonderful concert. Also had the, had the pleasure of being, it was my first time being a Powell parent. I attended the, the Powell Dinner, Football and Cheer Dinner, and that was, that was a lot of fun, just great parents. I'd always been a mountaintop parent, but it was great to experience the Powell parent experience and just meet a lot of great people over this past year and watch our cheerleaders grow and do great stuff. And we'll do some more at Ron Charles's event on Wednesday, so I'm looking forward to that. And just want to say, going to the, the high school football and cheer dinner, I'm so, I'm just exploding with pride over our, how our kids conducted themselves, how well they did, how, what the seriousness and focus with which they performed this, this year in football and cheer, and the amazing teams of coaches that Coach Grant put together, and how Coach Kalixto is doing with the, with the cheerleading coaches. And it's, we really have some fantastic coaches and dedicated people, both paid and volunteer, that have produced some tremendous results with our kids, and I'm so proud of all of them. It's one of the highlights of this year. Couple of follow-up points, since we're, we're in the process of retiring. One is the, how was, where did we end up and what are we looking forward to next year in terms of where we ended up on elementary school music and the challenges that happened with the communication and the cuts around that? So Dr. Cascone, can you tell us kind of where we ended up with that and what you're looking forward to with that next year?
Yeah, I'll have to refresh my memory. I know that some weeks back, I had kind of circled back with Mr. Quagliato, Ms. Mendez to really kind of strengthen my understanding of the, kind of the programmatic changes which were made to compensate for those changes. I understand that an additional period was added in the upper grades, and what they did in the lower grades was they incorporated a standard portion of every lesson in the beginning part of the lesson that focuses specifically on music reading. And that's really the key, right? The key is, is that, that, that when students arrive at that grade level, when they start to actually take instruments, that they haven't lost any of the knowledge that they ordinarily would have arrived there in terms of their ability to read music. And from what I understand, in, you know, and I, and I went right to the source. I went right to Mr. Quagliato, because nobody takes more pride or considers themselves more of a steward of the program as Mr. Quagliato. And I asked him an honest question. I said, with the changes, you know, that are in place, do you still feel confident that students, and this is what I framed it as, when they get to the high school, that they will not have lost anything, right? So that when the musicians get here and the program really starts to ramp up? And the answer I got from him was, he was comfortable. And that was good enough for me, because if he wasn't, if he hadn't been comfortable, I think he would have said that to me, and I would have had to look at the program and say, well, then we need to see what we can do to put that time back. But they've made some creative enhancements to the curriculum, and I think we're, you know, we're in good shape. And that's, you know, what I'm getting from, you know, somebody who cares very deeply about the program, Mr. Quagliato.
Okay. I would, won't belabor it, but I would also circle back with the elementary school principals, because we talked about the social emotional benefits, emotional development that takes place around music, as well as the creative development. And while we may still be able to pick up the momentum necessary to have them be at the level, the high level that the high school always performs at, want to still make sure that the benefits at the elementary school level are not diminished. So that's something to look at for next year. And for middle school, the, the issues still exist whereby kids have to choose between art, for seventh grade, they have to choose either art or music and, and STEM, and then for eighth grade, they have to choose art or music or STEM. And there are a ton of kids who love all three. And we know since STEM is really supposed to be STEAM, that their creativity in art and in music, they're supposed to be able to working and, and looking at how to combine that for creativity and innovation and how all of them work together. Right now, they're not allowing that. They're, they're forced to, to choose.
I agree with you 100%. It's a real, it's a real flaw in our current middle school schedule. We need to take a hard look at our middle school schedule. Many middle schools are on an AB alternating block, and, you know, with that alternating block, they're able to actually, you know, make accommodations like that. And I think it's something we really need to get done, for the exact of the reasons you're saying. So I agree with you.
And last tough, tough question on that area. GNT. When you first came on board, I know that you had a billion things, like drinking water through a fire hose. You had so many things to wrap your arms around and to manage. But with GNT, we ended up with a situation whereby when we changed the standardized test used for GNT, a lot of kids, not based on their performance in classes, but based purely on tests, were all of a sudden removed from GNT. And that was telling a child and a parent, oh, you're no longer gifted and talented since we changed the testing approach to this. And that caused a lot of pain, a lot of pain, because it didn't matter whether or not the child was doing well in the actual classes. It came down to a standardized test. And some of these kids had actually done, been already classified GNT in New York and other places. That caused a lot of pain. I don't know that you've been able to do anything about it since you came on board, but I don't know if we're able to heal any of those situations.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Mr. Robertson. In fact, you know, I had some, some feedback I received from a couple of, a couple of parents, and so, and they were really appealing to me to, to help, right, to look into it. And so I have recently met with Ms. Mendez. I've asked to review the entrance and, and exit criteria for the GNT program, and I've been very, very clear on this. I do not support the removal of students from GNT based exclusively on a standardized assessment like the MAP. If a student is performing well in the program, if a student is performing well in their courses, in other words, they're not lagging behind in their regular courses, you know, and continue to receive those recommendations, I do not support removing a student from the program based simply on a MAP score. And that is something that I plan to defend pretty aggressively. So...
And very last point. We eliminated the policy that was in the second reading today, and that was, that had to do with...
Public complaint grievance.
Public complaints. And I'll ask that, as our new board members come on and as you look at that, and I'm happy to come back to the mic, that you seriously look at changing the wording in paragraph two and deleting the limits on comments and or opinions. And here's why. Ethics already makes it clear that we as board, as a board, aren't even supposed to act in public unless we feel that the administration has failed to act, and then we can bring up and act on something in open public meeting. But in conversation... But in conversations with our constituents, the people who we're supposed to represent, if somebody has an issue, two things. We aren't supposed to refer directly just to the superintendent necessarily. We, the first thing you should do, and you pointed this out in a, in a note you had earlier, you encourage them to go through chain of command. Hey, you're having a problem with your teacher? Talk to your teacher first. If it doesn't work out, then talk to the principal. And we'll still make sure the superintendent's aware. But you don't want to have to have 200 things brought to you that should be done through chain of command. And two, a board member is never supposed to, and this is in ethics, the ethics rules too. We're not supposed to make a promise or a commitment. But to say that we can't comment or give our opinion, especially if we qualify it legally by saying that this is solely our opinion, does not necessarily represent that of the board, is a major PR issue and a service issue. We should be able to talk to a parent and say, I empathize with your concern, this, this, and this. I may have even experienced that. And you know what? I've heard about that from other people. Here's the proper process to go through. But to be able to say, I can't comment on that. That's not a good position to put a board member in, nor is it good for public relations. Simply to say, I, you know, I hear you, here's where you need to, I'll, you need to escalate that to the superintendent, but I can't comment on that at all. I have no opinion on that. I can't express any. It's, it's, I would eliminate the comment or opinion and keep it to prohibiting any commitment, which is in keeping with the ethics, with the code of ethics, so that we can maintain those relationships with those folks who we, who voted for us to represent them and have go, those conversations while still referring them to go through chain of command or to escalate to the level of the superintendent, as is, as is appropriate. And look forward to facing this again. I wanted to put that out there. That's it. And just want to, you know, this has been quite the year, and I feel we've accomplished a lot. And, you know, as somebody, Ms. Mordecai has been doing this nine years, and I've been doing it only six here, right? But it's, you know, I have to say that despite the challenges of constant change, in six years with five board members, I've actually worked with eight people and with four superintendents. We know that's not going to change, right? We're going to have somebody for another decade here. But despite all those constant changes, and there was a comment Dr. Cascone made earlier, we've been able to be a part of helping things to stay focused and to progress. High schools' graduation rate at an all-time high and a competitive one in the state. College, college attendance rates at an all-time high and competitive in the state and nationally. And so many areas where, you know, we've been able to help through advocacy, through policy and through votes. And it's been such a phenomenal privilege. That's all I can say to work with everyone. Even when we disagree, it's a good thing. We're supposed to, and that's okay. That's a beautiful thing. That's one of the thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Merklinger.
So I just want to recognize that Leo McCormick will be appearing on Chalk Junior tomorrow night at 8 o'clock. For those of you that are inclined to watch the Food Network, I happen to love that show. So I'll be looking forward to that. Just want to congratulate Justin Cadeau, who's going to continue his tennis, athletic and academic career at Howard University. He got a D1 scholarship, which is awesome. I can't even tell you how difficult those are to get. So congratulations to him and his hard work. Congratulations to Kai and Bashkov, who also performed this past weekend at Radio City Music Hall as part of the New Jersey Youth Chorus. And I just want to recognize that we have our fall, our winter sports pep rally this Friday night. So we're going to be, hockey actually kicked off this past weekend. But swimming, indoor track, basketball, wrestling, fencing, we've got a lot going on. Our competitive cheer team, which by the way, is going to Florida. So congratulations to them. And I just want to recognize Ron Charles, previous board member. His family hosts a Toys for Tots fundraiser, which our West Orange High cheerleaders, as well as our PAL cheerleaders, will be performing at, on Wednesday night at Club 466, right on Prospect Ave. It starts at 6 o'clock. It's a really great event. It collects gently-used or new coats for youth children who are in shelters. So it's a really great opportunity to help them. And it also collects toys for tots at St. Jude's Hospital. So it's a great event. I too got to attend the football and cheer banquet. It's the first time I've been to the Hanover Manor in three years. The last time I was there for it was my friend's repast. So it was actually nice to be there to celebrate something positive. And with that, you know, I always think of him as this angel on my shoulder. And I have to say, Saturday, I was driving up from Rutgers after being in an event with my son. And it was a really long and tiring day because he got to play baseball. I had to sit and watch. Four hours in the cold is not fun, but watching him was great. But driving home, going through the tolls, someone actually paid my toll for me. So with that, and in the spirit of the holiday season and ending on a positive note, I would like to challenge everyone to pay it forward. Pep rally is Friday at 7 o'clock at the high school gym.
Not really, but you can come talk to us at the end, which is moments from now. I just had two quick things. Last week, I was able to attend an assembly at Roosevelt that the Township Environmental Commission came and spoke to the eighth grade science classes. You know, a lot of good questions from students who were there, a lot of, you know, interesting learning taking place. And one of the science teachers is really interested in heading up and doing a sustainable jersey for schools out of Roosevelt. So I think that they may be first on the list to start on that next year. The other thing was, Friday night, I was able to chaperone along with Mr. Rothstein. We were at Roosevelt for a movie night that PTA put on. And I was hanging out in the entranceway. And, you know, there's the plaque on all the school buildings that says when it was put up and, you know, who the board president was and whatever. So, you know, it says, you know, erected 1931 to 1933. And it's, you know, board president so-and-so, board vice president so-and-so, and then three board members. And then under the three board member names, still in the same, you know, font, right with the other board members, were two other names that said apostrophe 31 next to them. So it seems like back in 1931, there was some version of student liaisons on the school board in West Orange, which I thought you might find interesting in particular. Yeah. So with that, we are done? Yes, go ahead. We're not done.
If, if I may, when you put together the Sustainable Jersey for Schools, as we started that program how many years ago as well, make sure you reach out to Xavier because Edison was one of the schools that.
Was a leader, yeah.
It's sustainable jersey. And, and Mrs. De Mayo, don't sleep on her experience. She took the five days training with me in the Green School Leadership Institute. And Washington was the first elementary school to participate in green initiatives.
You know, there, there's so many points that you can get on the district level with that, which is kind of different from the way Future Ready is set up.
That's the shirt I sent you.
Any school that wants to should be able to do it with, you know, a minimum of labor to get bronze.
And I should add, as I transition off the board, I will send an email for all the committees I belong to. And one of them is the Sustainable Jersey Committee. And we already have a resolution in place for Sustainable Jersey for Schools. So you just need to wipe my name out and put somebody else's name in because the resolution is all ready to go. I believe it's Peter Fick at the high school. The AP environmental teacher is the teacher liaison. Bob Seeg is the buildings and grounds liaison. And the high school also has a Fight for Green Committee. So use what we got.
Yep.
Don't reinvent the wheel.
We're going to make it happen.
Something you should check into too. Actually, a lot of our schools are doing sustainable green efforts in conjunction with grants provided by the YMCA, the West Essex Y in Livingston.
Okay, good.
So it may be good just to do a survey of what all the sustainable green things that are going on in the district and see how to better coordinate those efforts. Because there's a lot of great resources already being tapped into. And of course, we could always tap Sustainable New Jersey much more.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. With that, next meeting right here, next Monday night, 7:00 PM instead of 8:00 because it'll be parade of honors. And with that, we're adjourned.